We'll go ahead and get started our meeting this evening. I'd like to call our meeting to order. Town council, regular council meeting for Monday, April the 27th, 2020. Do you have a roll call, please?
Mayor T. Walt?
Here.
Vice Mayor Seelock?
Here.
Councilman Cockrell?
Here.
Councilman Gillespie?
Here, thank you.
Councilman Holloway?
Here.
Councilman Meza?
Here.
Councilman Thompson?
Did I hear anything from Natasha?
I didn't.
Here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Next item on our agenda tonight is the minutes approval for work session minutes of April the 9th, 2020, regular council meeting minutes of April the 13th, 2020. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move the council approve the work session minutes of April the 9th, 2020, and regular council meeting minutes of April the 13th, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This time, will I call? I have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Seelock?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, item three on our agenda tonight is report to special committees, town officials, and the interim town manager. Mr. Teedrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I have nothing of significance to report, other than all our operations are still fully functioning in this new state of affair we find ourselves in. All personnel are healthy and well, and we check in frequently. We've established some new protocols. Wanted to give a shout out to Dupont. Exalta regarding some hand sanitizer. I don't know if members of council saw our Facebook post, but they gave the town and county 250 gallons of hand sanitizer, and the town's in the possession of 100 gallons that we are in the process of disseminating throughout all departments. So, we're very appreciative of that most generous gift. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Thank you, Matt. Next item tonight is requesting inquiries of the council members.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We heard from Baker Tilly today. We will be soon getting a timeline from them, probably by the end of this week, for council's review. They have about 35 applicants at this point for the town manager position. We anticipate it will probably be 40 by the end of this week, and they will go through a interim period of time where they review those. They'll narrow it down to 15. I made sure that they would make all applicants' applications viewable for the town council. Also, that those 15 will go through a series of questions by them with a video for our Then we will narrow it down to those first round of interviews that we would like to see out of the 15, or add whatever is necessary beyond that, and then, if necessary, for a second round of interviews. So, we will be getting weekly updates from them. You and myself will be on the first, and we will pass it along to the council each week as we receive it. Right now, I asked the pertinent question. We asked for a 90-day turnaround. Once I see the timeline and your council's review, it looks like at this point, and I have not seen the timeline, I've just gone by the verbal that I've been given, we could be in the position to hire a new town manager by the 1st of June. But let's wait until we see the timeline that will be forthcoming this week. That's all I have to report at this time.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else?
So, Mr. Seelock, you're saying that possibly by June 1st? So, really, that would be sooner than a 90-day turnaround, correct?
That's true.
Okay.
Anyone else? Our next item tonight is report to mayor. The only thing I have this evening is like to thank everybody for following the governor's order, stay home, and hopefully, everybody stay safe. So, with that, our next item tonight is going to be the proposals of additions or additions of items to the agenda. Do we have any this evening? Item number four will be the consent agenda, which we have none. Next five items are public hearings that will go in one by one. Item number five, I'll have a starter public hearing in a few minutes, and this time, on number five, the ordinance to amend Chapter 160 pertaining to licensing vehicles, particular the display of the vehicle decal or sticker. Ms. Presley, could I have the read the summary, please?
Council's requested to affirm on its first reading an ordinance amendment to Chapter 160 pertaining to licensing of vehicles, particularly the display of vehicle decals and stickers as presented. If approved, the town apartment will vehicle decal sticker will not be required to be displayed on vehicles. However, the decal sticker may be provided upon request.
This time, we open up the public hearing. According to my agenda, we have nobody that's responded to this public hearing. So, with that, we'll close the public hearing, and I'd like to have a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council affirm on its first reading an ordinance to amend to Chapter 160 to remove the requirement for town vehicle decal stickers to be displayed on vehicles, but allow the decal sticker to be provided upon request as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Seelock?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seelock?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes.
Presley, he responded. Did you hear him?
No, I didn't. Did someone else hear him?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item is item number six, another public hearing, an ordinance to amend to Section 134 pertaining to new state requirements issued by the Department of Environmental Quality, known as the DEQ. This time, we'll open up the public hearing. We had no responses that we received in on this public hearing. So, with that, we'll close the public hearing. Now, here are motions, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move that council affirm on its first reading an ordinance amendment to Chapter 134 pertaining to new state requirements issued by the Department of Environmental Quality and pertaining to more stringent standards for sewer and procurement of waste as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, may I just ask a question that, so, in the separations, violations, and penalties, the penalties for misdemeanor violation of this chapter, it's on 85-2. Who enforces the penalties there? The failure to remove the containers from the town right away, or failure to bag solid waste, or the late placement of solid waste materials? I'm just curious, who enforces that?
Matt, can you answer that?
No, sir. Let me confer with Mr. Napier. One moment. Let me find out. What page is that on, Ms. Cockrell?
It is 85-2. It's right after the motion stuff. It's like this next page.
This is Doug Napier. That could actually be enforced by the town police. It could be enforced potentially by the sheriff's office. It just depends on who it's reported to. It could potentially be enforced through the attorney general's office. There's just a number of ways it could be enforced. Most likely, what would happen, though, is unless it's a repeated flagrant violation, it would not be enforced as a criminal violation. Usually, it's done through regulatory means, but potentially, it could be done through the police department, or even, like I said, through the sheriff's office. So, that would be very unlikely.
Okay, I appreciate that information. I just, I guess my question is to anybody, or to Mr. Napier or town staff, are citizens notified of these penalties, or these, you know, specifically 1, 3, 4, or 5? I'm just curious if citizens are, if we do our due diligence to let them know about these.
Yeah, usually, what happens is that most of the time when there are violations, it's an unwitting violation by a citizen, and they are notified and informed that what they are doing is a violation of the code, and an effort's made to educate them so that it's not done again. The purpose of this is not as intended to be a penal ordinance, but rather to bring them into compliance. It's usually enforced as a penal code when whoever's doing it, whoever's violating the code, is doing it repeatedly and apparently knowingly. That's when it's enforced as a criminal violation. It's preferred that it's just not done at all, and generally, experience has shown it's done unwittingly. People just don't know any better.
Okay. Number five was probably the one I had the most question about, late placement of solid waste materials at the curbside. Am I interpreting that to mean that if they don't take their town blue trash can out to the curbside by a certain time? Is that what that means?
Yes, ma'am. The town codes is supposed to be out by 7:00 a.m.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Again, that's, I just wanted to make sure that our citizens are aware of that, but it sounds like for Mr. Napier that we have some leeway of educating them before we go to fines and such. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, I'm just, just want to know, you're saying the cans, Rob, they have to be out by 7:00 a.m. So, when's the earliest you can put your cans out?
You can put them out the night before. They just ask you have them out by 7:00. That way, when the guys start, whichever first street they hit, the cans will be out when they start their day at 7:00. And to follow up to Ms. Cockrell's one question, kind of with Doug, we do send three letters certified with pictures of whatever it is in a letter beforehand.
Any other discussion? Ms. Presley, can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Seelock? Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes.
You answered.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next public hearing tonight is number seven, an ordinance to amend Chapter 85 pertaining to the removal of recycling collection fees. We have no responses on this, so at this time, we'll open up the public hearing. If there's no one responding to this by letter, we'll close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. This is Matt Teedrick. I want to check with Ms. Presley. Ms. Presley, we completed the public hearing number six, correct?
Yes, but the comments, I believe, are for number seven.
So, have we, and we voted on six, correct?
We voted on six.
And we voted on number seven?
We have not. The motion was for number six.
Yes, I thought that we'd gotten one ahead somewhere, but I couldn't find it through my notes here.
The motion was read-
I apologize. I think that was me. I was trying to follow along the papers. Sorry. I apologize.
The motion was for number six, and that's what you voted on.
Yeah, that's correct.
But the comments were for number seven, I believe.
Yeah, that's what I looked. I went back and found the paper, and that is number seven.
Okay.
So, at this time, we're now on number seven. Is there any discuss? I need someone to make a motion first.
I'll do it. I move that council affirm on its first reading an ordinance amendment to Chapter 85 to remove a recycling collection fee of $10, and changing the name Environmental Services to Public Works throughout the chapter as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Tina, when you put the minutes together, can you make those comments for item seven instead of item number six?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that'd be great. Okay, at this time, we need a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Seelock? Was that a yes? I didn't hear it.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item on our agenda tonight is number eight, public hearing to consider an amendment to the FY 2020 budget in the amount of $1,313,000 for engineering design related to the Route 522 North Corridor redundant water line. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing. We do have five responses to this. We have one from Kenneth Dameron, one from Linda Allen, one from Bruce Rappaport, one from Elaine Miller, and one from Anna Earl. We have most, we were sent to the council earlier today in unison, so everyone should have had a copy of those. So, at this time, we'll close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that council approve a budget amendment in the amount of $1,313,000 to utilize funds for the water fund balance reserves, and to approve the award of $1,313,000 to CHA Consulting for engineering, design services, construction, contract administration, and project closeout. Operation and maintenance manuals for the Route 522 North Corridor redundant water project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. This is Matt Teedrick. I'm with the town attorney, and he's advising that we actually read the public hearing emails that were sent into the record.
Or at least paraphrase the major points if they're lengthy.
I think we need to read them.
It'd be preferable to read them, actually, if they're not too terribly long.
Ms. Presley, could you do that for us, please, then?
Sure. The first one's from Linda Allen, 15 Matthews Street. Number one, get engineering drawings done for the redundant water line to 522 North and Dominion Power by making an amendment to the 2020 budget. Cost $1,313,000 coming from the water treatment plant professional services budget line. 9601-3510110 appropriated funds. I object to this amendment of the budget by asking that town council consider both the timing or framework of COVID-19 expenses and other high demand needs being considered by council at this time. The second objection to this request to fund engineering drawings is based upon the cost of the project itself, having gone from $5.5 million originally to about $12.5 million now. Obviously, previous councils put off doing the work in 2021, which increased the cost significantly. The third concern is that instead of having engineering drawings done, I would ask that the council look at its list of projects, prioritize them, review the budget carefully, knowing that we will have reduced revenue in 2021 and quite likely in the following few years. It would be prudent to schedule the projects according to the priority list, and as the financial situation improves, to the point where we can afford to do each project or add in more projects. Four, there has been a failure to plan for this project as follows. Once the priority listing is completed, the new town manager should attempt to renegotiate the cost of the water line with Dominion and seek advice about finding someone that would lower the cost to the town itself. Perhaps, two, the staff and council can find some expert help from its past consultants for this project. Such questions as the age of the current pipeline, the lifespan of the material, the conditions under which it exists are all important to know before making a decision about the redundant line. Equally important, different scenarios with possible breaks, or length of time to repair, projected costs, what companies do the repairs. In effect, the matter has not been completely studied at any time, beyond a few proponents of the project, and many more who object to the project. The town has never given any indication that it would know what to do or how to do it where there ever a break. If the council is so concerned it has a member who loses sleep over this project, wouldn't you think that it would want a knowledge base to guide its decisions whenever and if ever a break occurs? The second one is from Kenneth Dameron. Please vote to table the proposed award, a $1,313,000 contract for engineering services to CHA Consulting. Be aware that going forward with this contract is but a precursor to approving the remainder of what is projected to be an $11,800,000 project to run a redundant water and sewer line to the so-called 522 Corridor, a bet with Dominion Energy having pledged to pay $3.5 billion. We, the town citizens, are not, to my knowledge, intractually obligated to do that project. Way back in 2011, Dominion, through its subsidiary, Vepco, acknowledged that it would be desirable to have such a backup for their critical water needs, and offered to pay 75% of the cost thereof to a maximum of $3.5 million. That would imply that the total cost would have been $4,666,667. But the projected cost now is something on the order of $11,800,000. In that same agreement with Dominion, it was agreed that blockages might occur, and that Dominion would hold the town harmless in such event. I urge the council to table the going forward with the contract to CHA Consulting, which coincidentally wrote the proposed time and materials contract, which would almost certainly make the hiring of a clerk of the works to monitor scene. Perhaps this issue could be revisited after the effects of COVID-19 matter became clearer. The next one is from Bruce Rappaport, 300 East Main Street. This is not the time to move forward with these projects, as the town does not have the revenue to cover these expenses, as so eloquently stated by your finance director. Use some due diligence and heed his advice. There will be a day when we can address these issues in a transparent, open public hearing in a more normal environment. There isn't any reason to try to ramrod these projects during these unsettled times. Between now and then, think about how to raise revenue without robbing from Peter to pay Paul. We all know the answer. The chickens will come home to roost. The next one is from Elaine Miller. In my opinion, the town should forget the expense for the water line to the corridor. The town should not be spending any money unless it's absolutely necessary. At a time like this, revenues are likely to be much lower than ever expected. Thank you. And then, the last one is from Ann Earl, 400 Grand Avenue. I just read with dismay the proposal before the town council to spend $1.3 million for an engineering contract to build a redundant water line out the Winchester Road Corridor. I strongly disapprove of this and any other expenditures related to this project, especially since the water and sewer infrastructure within the town needs major replacement and help. If Dominion Power wants these redundant water and sewer lines, then let them pay for it in full. It is also my understanding that extending these water and sewer lines may increase the cost of water and sewer to taxpaying residents in the town. Assuming this may be true, it is totally unacceptable. I live in the Hoffman Heights area of town. Daily, we have significantly reduced water pressure and have had blockages with the sewer lines, which plumbers indicate may not be in the lines on our property, implying there are issues with the town's portion of the new sewer lines. My parents also lived in this area from 1981 to 2002, and even back then, they had significant issues with low water pressure and sewer backups. Sherwood Avenue, Oak Street, and other areas in this neighborhood have had numerous patch stops because of the old failing water and sewer lines. Repair issues for water and sewer lines throughout town are an ongoing issue. It seems to me it's just past time to do a major replacement of the water and sewer lines within the town limits, rather than meet the demands of properties outside of town. It is still understand, I still don't understand how the town front wheel becomes responsible for the water and sewer out at the shopping centers for Dominion Power and that entire corridor since they are not within the town. Please convey to the town council my strong disapproval of any further water and sewer connections out of the defined town limits. Thank you. And that ends all of the comments. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Presley. Since we reopened the public hearing to read the letters, I'm now closing the public hearing again, and I'd like to hear another motion on the issue, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move that council approve a budget amendment in the $1,313,000 to utilize funds from the water fund balance reserve, and to approve the award of $1,313,000 to CHA Consulting for the engineering, design services, construction, contract administration, and- and Project Closeout Operation and Maintenance Manuels for the Route 522 North Corridor Redundant Waterline Project.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Now, is there any discussion at this point?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to speak to this engineering award being tonight. I will be voting for moving ahead with the engineering for the redundant water line. This project has been put off by numerous councils in the past, and since, the price has almost doubled. Putting this off any longer, and the price will keep climbing. So I keep hearing the term Dominion Waterline. It's not only that it's the Dominion Waterline, it's also the Walmart Waterline, the Target Waterline, the Cisco Waterline, the Exalta Waterline, the RSW Jail Waterline, and to many other fine businesses and factories that took a chance on front row in Warren County. Whether you was for or against development in the corridor, it's here now, and we made a commitment to them. This was never as clear to me as what happened on April the 2nd. Most citizens don't know that we had a water main break there at 522 and Fairgrounds Road, which we lost water to the jail for four hours. Even the, people might think that the infrastructure out there in the corridor is new, but as with everything, it ages and it gets brittle. The jail, like I said, the jail was out for four hours, and the jail is on a vacuum waste system, which requires water at all times. So in the time, sewage backed up through the floor drains. The jail requires water for cooking, bathing, and sanitary purposes. If we have a break anywhere in our town, we can isolate it without interruption of service. Every place but, like I said before, every place but one, and that's the service line that serves the corridor. If we have a break for an extended period of time, the town could be held liable for damages and lost profits. Dominion Power is offering to help with $3.5 million for this project, and with the increased water rates that are coming into effect over time, they will almost cover the cost themselves. And right now, we have two pressing issues now. The redundant water line and INI abatement, which we have no choice now to act because putting this off any longer will only cost more. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Actually, Councilman Gillespie said it very well. There's a couple of things I wanted to respond to in the letters that were read into the record, but first, I could see, I don't know if it's BJ or Mr. Teedrick who has the Route 522 Corridor Reliability Project up, but I don't know, by chance, do you have the spreadsheet that demonstrates how this is being paid for as well? I'm sorry if I'm catching off guard. That's it. So I wanted to, so I want to address a couple of different things. Number one, the water funds are paying for the redundant water line, and I think that this council, with the consultants and our finance director, have come up with a clever way to pay for the redundant water line. I know that there are concerns that if we didn't pay for this, there's some who advocate that if we didn't pay for this at all, and the water rates change with Dominion Power, that we would actually be making more money to spend on our INI, and that's a legitimate point. But what I want to bring up is a couple of things. Number one, to Councilman Gillespie's point, we are kicking this can down the road. At the time when Dominion offered 3.5 million, we could have paid a significant portion of the redundant water line, which we opted not to do at that time, and since then, the cost has gone up. There is comments made about renegotiating the contract, to which we have set down with Dominion and tried to ask for more money for the project, which they responded, rightfully so. They gave us a significant amount of money towards that project at the time when we could have executed on it and didn't. And so that's our fault, that we could have done it cheaper, it wouldn't have cost the town as much money, and now we're having to pay a little bit more to get it done. Councilman Gillespie did a great job outlining the other businesses that are taking advantage of this. I, too, am tired of hearing it called the Dominion redundant water line. I don't think that's fair to Dominion, nor is it fair to all the other businesses that are out in the corridor. There was a point mentioned about us not being contractually obligated. That's absolutely correct. We can forego the money, and then somewhere along the lines, we're going to have to do it, but we're going to have to do it without $3.5 million seed money to get the project going. So even though we're not contractually obligated, we do have a window of time to take advantage of the $3.5 million, and that time is running out. Yeah, and the time is running out. So that was the main points that I wanted to make. I, too, will be voting for it. I think that, again, just to kind of recap, I think we have a way that we're able to pay for the line without it costing our citizens more money and without it costing our citizens more money. And as, oh, sorry, I'm sorry, I'm scratching, reading through some of my notes, my paper. One other point I wanted to mention. If the water line, oh, that we, it is a utility fund, that we are in the business of providing water to the corridor, whether we want to or not nowadays, that time is past. We are selling water and sewer to businesses in the corridor, and having one passage of water out into the corridor is a liability. If that does go out, then how are we going to continue to make sure that those businesses stay open? So again, I'm going to vote in the affirmative for the redundant water line, and I think that there is plenty of information to be shared related to the consultants that have come in and provided us either a way for pay for it or the plan for us to move forward. And then one more thing. BJ, when did we first have, BJ or Mr. Teedrick, when did we first have our first conversation with this council relating to moving forward with this project? Was it about six months ago?
Yeah, I can highlight some of that for you, Mr. Mezza. So I took the presentation that we were given or provided in August of 2019. I took that presentation by CHA and I added some slides at the end of it. This document, this slide currently that you're looking at demonstrates the time period by which we've been, the town council has been discussing the redundant water line and need for the redundant water line, and probably Mr. Teed, or you could probably speak to it better than most. It's been talked to, you've talked about even before 2011, due to some of the points that Mr. Gillespie and Mr. Mezza just referenced. Here is, here is a document that demonstrates, you can't see the top, one moment, let me, are you able to see the top portion where it says preliminary engineering report? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, the preliminary engineering report was awarded, the PER was awarded in December of 2018. In August of 2019 is when CHA went, presented to council the preliminary report, and the cost for the report has been $43,000. That's already been appropriated and spent. Town Council advertises for engineering services in September of 2019. The town received five RFP proposals for proposal for competitive negotiations per VA Procurement Act in October 24, 2019. We are ready to award to begin design in February 6, 2020. That's when we had a town council work session and town council authorized moving forward for the award, and now we're at the public hearing tonight, almost three months after the February 6, 2020. So
Thank you.
You know, I just, I think it's important to know that this is not some whimsical move, that this hasn't been discussed or planned for. This was well in discussions prior to the COVID-19 pandemic. You know, I personally believe that we have a responsibility to businesses and industry in the 522 corridor, and I do believe sincerely that there's some liability issues should we be out of water for a significant time period in that corridor. Is now the best time to do it? One could argue, no, not from an uncertainty of revenues. One could also argue, yes, because the interest rate that CHA used to calculate, I'm sorry, calculate the bond yield or the bond repayment was 4%. It's our understanding that we can get significantly better than that rate. And BJ, what was the latest you got from VRA?
I believe it was around 2.85, I think is what we were looking at, but that is obviously subject to change, and we'll be pursuing other options as we get closer to the time for the project.
But again, Mr. Mezza, just to, yeah, go through one point, what you're voting on tonight is the engineering to start the process, and during that time period, we will fine tune, or you will fine tune, because I won't be here. Town Council will fine tune the project and make a determination whether they move forward or not at a future date.
Thank you. That was, it was really important to me to outline the timeline because I don't want it to be painted as council foolishly rushing into this project when clearly it's been a work in progress for years with council.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add some comments. Vice Mayor Seelock will vote affirmatively for this action. Councilman Gillespie and Mezza eloquently stated the can kicking down the road and the extended cost over this period of time. They also stated, or the interim town manager stated about liability. Think of the liability that we owe if sued over this loss of water to our corridor. And the other fact that's not really known here is 70% of the meal tax that's obtained in that corridor is what funds our school budget. I don't think anybody listening tonight, or those that wrote the letter, mentioned the meal tax and the school system's budget. That is a very important fact. Joining us council in 2017, it was pretty evident this project was kicked down the road too long, and I know it's a bad situation right now and we're in, but we have done contingency planning for months now and how to move monies and adjust, and this council is planning to meet regularly to discuss budget, shortfalls, or reserves as needed. This project needs to go forward, and as stated, I will vote in the affirmative.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add, really, the other members of council have already pretty much stated some of my thoughts, you know, about Dominion's committed funds and the future water rates for Dominion, and the fact that the cost is only going to escalate in the future. I think about some of the school capital projects that got postponed and postponed, and then costs just were double and more. But one thing I wanted to mention, and I looked for it and could not find it in my email, but I believe earlier this year, the superintendent of RSW sent an email, and maybe Mr. Teedrick can remember this better, but he described the time that the water was off at RSW and just the problems that it caused and could cause. And I just really want to bring that to the public's attention because those are things that we don't, we aren't aware of unless we're in that situation. So I just, if I could have found the email, I would have read it into the record, but I cannot, but just know that they were very grateful to get the water back on as soon as it could, hours versus if it could be days or weeks. I can only imagine the situation it would create at the jail.
Ms. Cockrell, I have the letter in front of me. Did you want me to read it into the record or summarize with your preference?
Mr. Teedrick, I will yield to what you believe would be the best, if you want to summarize or if you want to read it. It wasn't extremely lengthy, I don't believe. Maybe it would be
It was two paragraphs.
Yeah, I think it might be good.
April 6, 2020, the letter was addressed to me as interim town manager. On Thursday, April 2, 2020, at approximately 3:30 PM, RSW Regional Jail experienced a complete interruption to our water service caused by a water main break at the intersection of 34522 at Fairgrounds Road. The town staff did a fantastic job responding, repairing the break and restoring service to the building by 8 PM. In a very short time period, this interruption in service caused a significant impact on the operation of the facility. RSW has a vacuum waste system instead of a gravity flow for sewage and gray water evacuation. The vacuum system requires water at all times, or we run the risk of damage to the costly components of the system, and the system will lose vacuum and cause gray water and sewage to back up in the floor drains and toilets. While we were without water service, the vacuum waste system was shut down to preserve the integrity of the components. Still, it did cause the system to lose vacuum, resulting in backups in the floor drains, toilets, and sinks in the facility. Of course, this happened while we were currently fighting COVID-19. RSW houses, on average, 400 to 500 inmates plus staff that require water for drinking, washing, toilets, heating, cooling, and food preparation. We do not have, nor is there the ability for us to store enough water to meet our needs. This incident brought to light that without redundancy of the municipal water service to our facility, we run the risk of causing a public health problem and the inability to remain open and operational if a service interruption were to last more than a few hours. We are working to see what options could be designed and put in place to minimize the impact of the vacuum waste system, but this is only a temporary and partial solution to this problem. I appreciate your time and attention in this matter and felt it was necessary to provide this information to you and the Town of Front Royal, Town of Front Royal, I'm sorry, this is what he has written here, Town of Front Royal Board of Supervisors, when considering a redundant water line for this area regard to Russell Gilkerson, Superintendent, RSW Jail.
Thank you, Mr. Teedrick. That definitely elaborated more so than my own words, so thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make one more comment, please. Mr. Teedrick, I'd like for the public works to take a long look at the residents whose letter stated that they are having issues at their residence, and I'd like to know some of the history of that and what is the plan if we have a real problem in that area. What are the repairs if necessary, or what is going on? That was one of my concerns when I read the letter. So if we could have a report on that to council, I certainly would appreciate it.
Yes, sir. I mentioned at the staff meeting today and to Mr. Boyer, and we're going to look into it further, find out what information. There's a couple of areas, we're familiar with a couple of other areas with low water pressure, but this was, some of this was new to Mr. Boyer, so we'll look into it.
Mr. Mayor, also, on page eight of the document that we were given, there is a schedule, and I just wanted to mention that I'm assuming if moving forward with this, those dates that were provided to us would obviously change, considering some of them have already passed. But I didn't know if that was something, yeah, it was.
Yes, ma'am. I can speak to that if you'd like.
Yep, go ahead.
The date, we have been in consultation, they are aware that the dates can and will change.
Okay. Yeah, there they are.
Anyone else? Ms. Presley, have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Seelock?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Mezza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
No.
No.
Yeah. One dissent, and the rest is, so the motion is carried tonight. The next item tonight on our agenda is item number nine, another public hearing, to consider an amendment to the FYI 2020 budget in the amount of $990,674, utilize funds from the sewer balance reserve and to reward sanitary sewer closed CTV, CCTV investigating for the INI abatement. Most, the public hearing is now open, we have no responses from the public, so I'll close the public meeting, and now we'll open up for a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move that council approve a budget amendment in the amount of $990,674 to utilize funds from the sewer fund balance reserve and award, and to award the bid of the sanitary sewer closed circuit television CCTV to Hydrostructures LLC for the completion of FR dash 1, comma 5, comma 6, comma 7, Phase 1, and FR 3, comma 8, comma 9, alternate A, Phase 2, that complies with the Department of Environmental Quality, DEQ consent order and moves the town forward with correcting inflow and infiltration, INI abatement.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, could someone speak to um, the letter from CHA where they mentioned about the lowest responsive and responsible bidder? I know that um, a town citizen had, had asked for some clarification on that, and I just thought in case um, others wanted to be educated on that, that maybe someone could speak to that. I'm assuming it, it was part of our packet, so it would be down a few pages that's there.
I'll have uh, Ms. Scott address that, Ms. Cockrell.
Thank you.
What was the question? Did it, did a citizen submit a question?
No, it was the uh, the emulation.
Oh, sure. So, the question is about the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, going to Hydrostructures LLC. The bid that was submitted by Utility Services Group provided qualifiers as part of their bid, and if those qualifiers had been part of their actual bid, their base bid would have been higher than the top bidders. So essentially, they should have submitted their bid as a base bid rather than add qualifiers onto their base bid.
So it's a technical elimination, is a fair way to put it?
Yes, yes, it was.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Yeah, I, it really, my, it wasn't really a question for me, I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware of why we didn't choose the one that had the lowest amount.
Yes, essentially, when qualifiers are put onto a bid, that determines that that bid is non-responsive. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, um, I just want to um, remind, um, I guess our citizens, um, what INI water is again. Um, I know we see the, some of these big numbers, and I, I take them back to when I'm looking at them in the paper, and um, so, you know, INI water is when stormwater enters the sanitary sewer system, and uh, the problem that this causes is um, is when this stormwater hits our sewer treatment plant, we have no, no place to put it, we have no place to store it. So when that happens, you know, we just spent forty-some million dollars building a new uh, wastewater treatment plant, and, and it's already at capacity. And um, so the problem we have is, is when, when we get those heavy rains and discharge, that water goes to the sewer plant, and we have no place to store it, so we got to discharge it. And um, you know, in 2018, I've said this before, 2018, we put over 35 million gallons of raw sewage in the Shenandoah River, and, and a community that, 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 you know, prides itself on, on, on our rivers, um, it's unacceptable. So, you know, we're, we're getting a hold of, of our problems in, in our, in our sanitary uh, laterals, um, to fix these leaks, um, and this cameras and uh, we're doing stuff where we put plastic down them. And sometimes, um, so that, that's what this uh, what we're, and I just wanted to remind everybody and let everybody know, thank you.
It's my telephone, I can't get it shut off.
I recognize the old ringtone there, Gene.
Yeah. Okay, we, we have any more discussion on this matter? If not, uh, could I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Seelock?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item tonight is number 10, council approval quarterly write-off of bad debts. Ms. uh, Presley, could I have the summary read on this one, please?
Sure, Councilman approved a revision to the bad debt policy in March of 2019 and requested to review and approve write-off of bad debt quarterly. Council is requested to approve on the removal of five years or older of outstanding accounts receivable or bad debts on the town's ledger for the first quarter of 2020 totaling $19,379.72, which is comprised of 48 utility accounts. All possible recourse of attempting to collect these amounts has been completed and the accounts have no activity for at least five years. That has determined that the accounts presented meet the criteria, criteria for uncollectible as determined by the town's bad, bad debt write-off policy. No activity on closed account for at least five years, and all other methods of collection have been exhausted.
Well, thank you, Ms. Presley, uh, do I hear a motion?
Mayor, I move that council approve the removal of five years or older of outstanding accounts receivable, bad debts on the town's ledger for the first quarter of 2020 totaling $19,379.72, which is comprised of 48 utility accounts. All possible recourse of attempting to collect these amounts have been completed, and the accounts have no activity for the last five years.
Can I have a second?
Second.
And a motion and a second, do I hear any discussion?
Uh, I apologize, Mr. Mayor, I seem very inquisitive tonight, but I do have two questions in reading this. One, does the town make note of these bad debts, uh, in case the, um, these people are future customers?
Um, yes, ma'am, we do indeed make a note, a deposit is required, but we're not able to collect on these accounts once they're written, written off, uh, due to the statute of limitations.
Okay, and then one other question, Mr. Wilson, um, I, I, just one of those latter mentions down there of $1,781, I guess my question would be, how does one, how does one uh, end up with something with that large of a debt if, um, if after so many months that it's, that their service is cut off?
The um, I, I can't speak to the individual account, but some of the instances that you'll see on here, um, are for maybe a water leak that had, had occurred, and then we're left with a high bill, or we go through uh, winter months and um, uh, service is not disconnected due to colder weather and the, uh, you know, uh, faulty hot water heaters will drive bills up. A lot of times what happens is that there's a problem uh, with a, uh, you know, water leak or a hot water heater, air, air handler, and then um, it's a, they're renting the property and rather than have it repaired or the landlord repair it, um, you know, the tenant will move out. Uh, other instances will be for a medical issue, we're unable to uh, disconnect services uh, for serious medical conditions, and um, uh, they get uh, uh, the uh, account holder gets an extension of services, um, and then after the uh, criteria um, ends, then we're left with a hefty bill. Uh, so there's many different circumstances to all of these, not, not, I'm not saying that that particular account is uh, um, is any one of those items, but in general, that's what we see.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that, that detailed explanation.
Anyone else? Here are none, could I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Seelock?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes. Yes.
Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item tonight is item number 11, FYI 20 budget amendment, it transfers to the contingency fund. Could I hear, read us, could you read the summary, please?
Council is requested to approve a budget amendment and budget transfers for the FYI 20 budget to provide contingency funds for potential shortfalls related to the COVID-19 pandemic. The amendment and transfers will provide the following contingencies. General and Street Fund, $753,723.72. Water Fund, $620,866. Sewer Fund, $256,256,44.46. Solid Waste Fund, $26,618.70.
Thank you, uh, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that council approve a budget amendment and budget transfers for the FYI 20 budget to provide contingency funds for the potential shortfalls related to the COVID-19 pandemic as follows. General, General Street Fund, $753,723.72. Water Fund, $620,866. Sewer Fund, $256,44.46. Solid Waste Fund, $26,618.70.
Do I hear a second? Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Presley, have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Seelock?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item tonight is a closed meeting on personnel, do I hear a motion to go into closed meeting?
Yes, due to issues related to the ongoing pandemic, I move that town council move to go into closed meeting to discuss the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to section 2.2-3711.a.1.1 of the Code of Virginia.
Any discussion? Ms. Presley, can I have a roll call?
Vice Mayor Seelock?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carried. This time we'll go into a closed meeting.
Um, Mr. Mayor, if I could just add one point for those in the audience, um, the host, uh, Mr. Jones is going to keep this current meeting open, so anyone wishes they could uh, stay on this line, members of council, you'll need to log into the, uh, the second WebEx address, that's a private, a private meeting environment. If they want to have any questions, you can call me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Teedrick's here. How did you get me?
I'm, okay, I'm here, uh, let's go ahead. Excuse me. Let's get started on our work session, uh, this evening, the first one we are discussing is the option.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, you have to come out of the executive session.
Oh, that's. Just got added.
You're right, do I hear a motion to come out of the executive?
Sure, I move that the mayor and town council certify that to the best of each member's knowledge is recognized by each mayor and council member's affirmative vote that only such public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting by the mayor and council, and that the vote of each individual member of mayor and council be taken by roll call and recorded and included in the minutes of the meeting of town council.
Do I hear a second? Do we have a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Teal? Vice Mayor Seelock? Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carried. This time we'll go into our work session this evening. We have one item tonight, option for local uh, economic recovery for individuals and businesses, we'll turn it over to you, man.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, so at the last work session, council wanted to ensure, or wanted, directed staff to come up with some various options as it relates to economic recovery for uh, businesses and possibly individuals. Um, so what I, what we've had before you tonight is um, is a proposed plan in event council decides to move forward, um, with this kind of initiative. Uh, what we did, Mr. Mayor and members of council, is we, we broke the businesses into four tiers, as you can see on the screen, uh, let me try to blow it up so you can see it better. Okay, can you see that better now? Um, on the left-hand side, we have tiers from 1580 to 50,000, 50,000 to 200,000, 200,000 to 500,000, and greater than 500,000 in uh, gross receipts or gross revenues. Uh, that equates to approximately 568 businesses that um, have business licenses within the town limits. Sorry? Okay, um, percentage of businesses in the tiers, well, there's approximately 25% of the businesses are in the 15,000 to 50,000 range, 17% in the second range, 11% and 23%. Uh, what we would be proposing is to um, is to take approximately a thousand dollars for a uh, a grant initiative for the bottom tier, up to 13,000 for the upper tier, and this can be laid out in another document that I'll show you in a moment. But in concept, this is, this is what we've, what we've come up with in, in, in concept. Any questions? I know, pretty vague, pretty broad right now, I don't know what's going off my screen.
I just noticed that.
There you go. Okay, so if we look at the businesses, this, again, this is a draft, uh, the intent of the program is to provide a grant program for financial assistance to businesses demonstrating economic hardship from effects of Governor Northram's Executive Order 53 on March 12th, 2020, and Executive Order 55 on March 30, as it relates to the COVID-19 pandemic. Um, the funds to be used first to pay outstanding town, the Front Royal utility bills, business occupancy licensing, real estate taxes, remaining assistance to be used by the applicant. So in other words, we want to make sure that they paid any past due bills, um, as well as um, um, any, any past taxes. The uh, as far as the administration goes, the Town of Front Royal will enter into an agreement with a nonprofit organization, for an example, again, for an example, the Front Royal Warren County Chamber of Commerce is. is, is well-suited per, per Virginia Code, section fifteen point two dash nine five three. Uh, the terms of the agreement will outline the process for the nonprofit to administer a grant of up to one million dollars for Front Royal Business Economic Recovery and Assistance. The nonprofit, excuse me, the nonprofit will work in conjunction with the Town of Front Royal Finance Department and the Blue Ribbon Committee to administer the grant. As far as eligibility, uh, this was, well, all of this was very challenging to come up with, but eligibility was probably one of the greatest challenges. Uh, what we came up with to propose, if you decide to move forward, uh, business must have a valid Town of Front Royal Business License and been in operation prior to Executive Order uh 53, um, which is on March 12th. Uh, the business must be located within the town limits as I previously mentioned. The business must demonstrate economic hardship as a, at least twenty percent reduction in gross revenues when compared to the prior year. Uh, business in, in the following sectors directly impacted by Governor Northam's Executive Order 53 are exempt from demonstrating. So what we wanted to do, we didn't want to force those that were forced to close to have to demonstrate economic hardship. Uh, because they're closed, um, we are, you know, we have a very, very good assumption that they are having some economic hardship. And here's an example of, well, not example, the, these are the businesses that are stipulated in Executive Order 53. Um, we would set a deadline as far as when to receive the applications. Now, the tier of support that we came up with, again, if we use the grocery receipts from 2019 as presented in the far-left column, the amount of assistance is in the second column, the additional assistance for having a town utility account and taxes is in the third column, and the total assistance is in the far-right column. The priority for the grant assistance priority will be given to those businesses forced temporarily closed, as we mentioned, and the, and just repeating the businesses. Businesses having a town front row utility account or real estate tax account will provide additional funds as illustrated in the third column. In the above chart, additional funds will be sent from the nonprofit to the Town of Front Royal and will reference the associated business. In event, all business accounts, utility, real estate tax, and business license tax are not in arrears, the town will apply and show as a credit balance the funds received by the nonprofit towards the business accounts. Uh, preference, again, preference will be given um to businesses that have provided a strategic plan, and I'm not suggesting a forty-page strategic plan, just a two-page executive summary of strategic plan uh for conducting business once the governor eases or lists restrictions. In other words, how they plan to perform uh during this period. Uh, they outline the process, they'll supply basic information, um, certified income statement or impact statement. Again, it's not required for the businesses that are forced to close. Uh, certified by, the uh, income statement needs to be certified by an accountant or CPA and used to provide proof of economic hardship. Those were all the other businesses. The re, review pass process, the town will verify business license, utility account, real estate tax. Um, so um, outstanding balances for utilities, B-poles will be paid first. Uh, additional assistance for having the town utility account or town real estate tax will be credited as prepayment towards utility account or taxes, and any remaining funds will be sent to the applicant. Uh, Blue Ribbon Committee will review applications and recommend approval for assistance based upon available funds, and we predict fourteen days um to review and fourteen days for funding is, is what we're, we think is reasonable. And again, um, everything that's been discussed is open for change, which I'm sure there'll be a lot of change if you decide to move forward. Um, I know I went through that quickly. It's nine fifteen. I didn't want to take too much of your time tonight. Um, I emailed you this, uh, emailed you this document for your consideration or review, but um, we've had, I've had several staff working on this. I've consulted uh business leaders, I've consulted um an international economic development uh CEO. Um, in general, they like, everyone seems to like this approach um should council decide to move forward. I just need, I just need some direction from council if you wish to move forward on something like this and let us formalize it or not.
My only objection here is that I don't, I would prefer that it, since it's our money and we're giving it to the businesses or whatnot, um, that we're the ones issuing the checks. I don't want the money going out the door to another entity and then it going through a process, some of it comes back to us, some of it, it just seems repetitive and like a lot of extra.
Yeah, that, that's a, it is, and you're right. Um, we were advised that um, that legally, uh, the town cannot do this.
Okay.
Again, I go back to the first, first comment I made about this matter is, is uh towns are not designed to, or governments are not designed to be a charity, they're designed to be the king. So they're designed to, to, to take money and, and take, or not take, but to receive taxes and receive money, not necessarily pay it out in the form of a, of a gift to the, to the people.
Right.
So um, um, that's why it needed to be a nonprofit, and the state code specifically said a, a chamber of commerce, and that's why they would be administering the grant. The other alternative, and I'll just throw it out for uh most localities that are, I, I won't say most, I'll probably go as far as to say all localities that are doing some kind of program like this, if they're, if they're abiding by the law, and that's a qualifier, so if they're doing it by the law, by the books, they're using their economic development authorities to do this. And we have the ability to, we have one, but we haven't formed it yet. Yes, ma'am?
So Mr. Teedrick, a couple of things. One is, so back in our own minutes of our work session on April night, um, when this was really kind of first brought up, um, in our own minutes that we approved tonight, it said that um, you know, Mr. Seelock had actually mentioned that he had spoken with town staff to find out what the town could do for the citizens, and he learned that the town can't give anything away. And at that time, Mr. Napier added that there's a provision in the Virginia State Constitution which states that local and state governments cannot give gifts or grants, um, which is what I'm assuming you were mentioning earlier. So when I see the words grant assistance, um, I, you know, I just, just want to clarify, you know, so we can't give grants.
Right, we, we.
Correct?
We can donate to, to the nonprofit organization, and then the nonprofit organization can make the disbursement. Um, is kind of the, uh, the way we, uh, the town itself cannot uh, uh, issue the grant is my understanding.
Okay. Well, I just want to, just want to start off by saying that um, I, I myself would like to see us, I, I applaud all the information that you've gathered and, and the effort that you've put into this. I myself would like to see us just kind of slow down a little bit. Um, I'd like to see what's going to happen from the federal government, from the state government, um, and see what types of relief they're going to provide to businesses. Um, I know that Mr. Teedrick just mentioned something about the EDA, and I know that I, I believe I read in the minutes that they were even adding some type of committee or board that was gonna um have like small business loans, and, and Mr. Teedrick or Mr. Wilson, do you guys recall reading that in the minutes from Friday's meeting?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. Their, their, uh, their committees doing loans, uh, whereas this would be a, a forgivable grant.
Correct. Um.
That's been standard practice with the EDA to have small business loans throughout uh the years of existence.
Well, I've.
What you read today is just standard practice for them.
Okay, okay. Um, I guess what I'm saying is I'd like to see what's available out there before we um, before we move forward with a million dollars. Um, I've had some citizens that have spoken with me, and they have concerns that we um, that our town has a lot of, you know, there's a lot of unknowns right now as to our own budget and what COVID-19 pandemic's gonna, what impact that's gonna have on us as a town, and their fear of how we're going to provide services to the citizens. Um, if we do have some large deficits in our revenues, and they're nervous about, you know, us um providing, you know, a million dollars out there, and if nine months from now, you know, will we, will we come back to them and ask them to, you know, raise taxes or raise rates and such? So I'm not against assisting businesses or citizens. At, I'm not overly against this, I'm just concerned that we, I don't want us to move quickly on this. I'd like for us to see what else is going to be available first before we move forward.
Laurie, I would, um, along those same lines, like, all of the arguments that were made against this, because I had a couple too, were the same arguments that were made against Dominion Power Line, I mean, not power line, they're water, they're redundant water line. Like, are my water rates going to go up? Are you going to increase my taxes um because of this huge project and so forth and so on? So I heard those too.
Well, it's good to know.
My response to that is very clear. That's why we've been doing contingency planning and moving dollars forward to make sure that we can cover as much shortfalls in next year's budget as possible. My second reaction is that you've already had one restaurant completely shut down and gone out of business already that I've, I've read about. If we don't help in some kind of recovery, our downtown is going to be a ghost town, if it isn't already. Um, most of the businesses I've talked to like this plan of uh disseminating by grocery receipts. The other thing that, Matt, I, I got some editorial thing. What if uh, is there any stipulation in here? Some businesses are owned by, say that they own two to three businesses in town. Is there any stipulation in um, how many grants you could get?
No, sir, just based upon their business license. So if they have, if they have three businesses and they have three business licenses, and they qualify under the others term, uh, various terms, they would receive three grants based upon how it's currently written.
Okay. The second thing that I had for editorial, um, one of the things we've talked about is cap limits. I didn't see a cap limit in here of a million dollars when I read through it.
Um, I thought I put that in.
Well, it's a, it, it's greater than a certain gross.
I might have missed it.
Yeah, right here, the, for the, for the program?
Yeah.
For one, up to one million dollars for a rural business license or, or economy, economic recovery. And the cap.
Okay, I was looking specifically for the word uh cap.
Right. Yeah, we, those, those are the kind of things we can fine tune should the coun, council wish to move forward.
Matt, um, this is Jake. Um, you guys did a tremendous job on this. Um, I know I talked about it and tried to poorly articulate something to this fashion uh last time, and I think that the tiered approach, um, whether it's the cap limits and identifying the appropriate businesses, I think you guys did a stellar job uh for putting together this draft document for us tonight. So thank you very much, because I can't imagine that that was easy, and I can't imagine that that was a lot of work, so I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Um, couple of quick questions and thoughts. Um, number one, I was, I, I was really pushing for something like this uh because I think that the town should have a response um to be able to help businesses, and I feel like uh my first, kind of the first direction I was going for was some sort of utility breaks or tax breaks, and I think that this is a compromise in those directions to be able to allow us to do it. Um, whether council votes on, um, you know, whether council votes on moving forward with something like this tonight or a month from now, or sixty, ninety days, or doesn't even do it, I, I think it's important that we have a response and that the town sees that we're trying to figure out a way to give assistance, and whether council gets consensus on that or not is another story. Um, so I, I say that because I want you to know that if council is not being divided and it doesn't ever go anywhere, I think it was very important that we demonstrated that we had the ability and we looked at something for this town. So again, thank you for that. Um, I, I like this. I think that, I think that uh Lori and Latasha bring up really good points about um when to do it, and I think that I struggle with that as well. Um, I think that what I struggle with is these businesses in the executive order have now been closed over a month. Um, and a lot of these businesses, as we're starting to talk, let's just focus on our, our Main Street area, a lot of these businesses um go week to week in revenue and, you know, paying salaries and expenses. Um, now, I know that a lot of them have, um, unfortunately have had to lay off their employees and maybe are paying curfew to go, or maybe not even operating their businesses. Um, but there's still debt service to be had for these businesses, and I think that my intention all along has been, let's make sure that these businesses are still here when the executive order is lifted. Um, let's make sure that they have a, a foot on the ground so that they can ramp up, um, and not that when the executive order is lifted, um, they don't have any more operating cash, they, they're, they're paying their debt service and they're done, and that's, that's what I'm afraid of. And now, I think that could be inevitable with some of the businesses, as Bill mentioned, um, but not all. And um, and I think that that's where I was really, you know, hoping that we'd be able to provide that assistance. So I don't know what the right answer is, but I do know that they've already missed a month with the executive order in place, and it doesn't look like in the next few weeks that's going to change. Um, and they could be going into a couple months. So I struggle with, if we don't do something today, when do we do it? And if it takes thirty days, uh, based on your two-week forecast for grant submission, two-week forecasts for committing and disbursement of funds, um, if it's going to take thirty days to get something, and we're already a month into this, it's going to be five weeks, by the time that somebody's going to get any kind of assistance, we're going to be out over two months. So when do we pull the trigger on doing something to help support our local businesses that way? And that's, that's what I struggle with. That's kind of the question I want to pose to council, because uh this is not my area of expertise, and, and I don't have all the answers for this. I just feel like there's something to be done sooner rather than later.
I agree with, uh, I agree with everything that you said, um, and I, I think we should do it sooner, um, just because, like you said, we don't know how much longer this is going to last, and a lot of the businesses have been able to change their models around and still get some form of income, but definitely not at the level they were previously.
Well, look at, look at the major point there. Additional assistance for having town utility account or town real estate taxes. Instead of them taking the money and, and throwing it out to a mortgage um in Ohio State, majority of these funds take care of these uh, uh, funds that we could have a shortfall on, so.
To help mitigate our bad debt is what you're saying.
You're exactly right. We're, we would gain back on the utilities, but we're still helping the business by not holding them hostage on, on utilities.
Yes.
But the funds come back to the coffers where they should be to carry out some of this shortfall or um losses, but it's still being those utility funds. So that's the big picture. But still, on the other hand, you got the other half of this chart that shows we're trying to do something to help keep the businesses in our community. To answer your question, Jake, I don't know what the magic date is. If it is June 12th, as uh the governor's saying, I hope that some of these restaurants that are planning to reopen or have not been under the guise of uh drop in delivery or pickup will have a plan going forward how they're going to open on that date, especially the restriction on social distancing. So I don't have a magic date, but I know that five weeks afterwards is not going to help an individual business. So we'd like to have these guidelines in place now so that businesses could apply, and yes, they've done everything according to stipulations. And yes, they've done everything according to stipulations and whatever magic date that we would decide, we could turn the, turn the wheels running at that time rather than waiting five to six weeks. That's my thoughts on that. It really comes down to the fact, do you like this approach? Now, if you like this approach, you don't have to implement until, say, June 12th, but you could already have the wheels turning.
Right, Bill, but if we, if we implement on, if we implement on June 12th, we're more than 90 days past before they ever get anything. So it's 90 days that they've been either having zero operations or very little.
Right. That's why I'd like to implement this process in advance so that they can already be applied and say, okay, if the town, whatever date we put on it agrees to this, I am now in the, in the program. So that gives them some assurance.
Mr. Seelak, this is Matt. If I could suggest, I would strongly encourage, if I understood you properly, I would strongly encourage putting together the entire process and having individuals apply and decide not to fund. I believe the first decision is council needs to give staff and I direction, do you want to do this program? In other words, do you want to offer an economic relief through a nonprofit? That's decision, in my opinion, that's decision one. Decision two is up to how much? And then decision three would be the general process and structure that we've outlined and the timing of it. So really, do you want to do this? And I think that needs to be a consensus from council at a work session. Do you want, do you want, do you want to do this? And if so, pick a date and staff and I'll work backwards from that date.
I agree. I think that some of the discussions we've had and some of this workforce that may be kind of idle right now could be implemented into this program and administer, help administer to the nonprofit groups.
What I, here's, here's what I propose. I, I like the idea. I think that staff should move forward in starting to, you know, figure out the timelines and implement it. My, my opinion of it would be if, if council wanted to do it, wanted to move forward on it, that we, it's going to still take a week or two to finalize the plan, get it out there, advertise it, you're probably still looking at it about another week, week and a half after that, which means that the first applications and the process would start maybe three weeks from now, which means that the first dispersments would be 30, 45, almost 60 days, 45, about 45 to 60 day, 45 days from now at least before a business ever got money. And if council was, if, if council is having a little bit of heartburn on this because of, let's say, the million dollar cap on it, Matt, is it, is it fine if council said, okay, a million dollars seems like a lot, let's see how this program goes, let's offer 500,000 and know that we can come back and say, we need to raise that cap to a million? Is that a possibility?
Yes, sir. And let me, it is a possibility. And let me throw other one, one critical element, and maybe what I should have included is a timeline in this document, so apologize. But this also requires a public hearing.
One or two?
Um, one. Mr. Neighbors done a lot of research on this recently.
Okay, so that's, so we're three weeks out?
That'll put us at least two to three weeks out from, yes, we have to advertise-
So three weeks out plus, plus getting it out there in the public is another week. So that's a month out plus from then, your timeline for first dispersment is 60 days. So it's still two months. If we said go today, you're still two months before the first check goes out, assuming council votes it forward.
Well, theoretically, yes, but we could also, if, if the intent of council is to move forward with this, we would, we would ramp up immediately and start getting the necessary applications, the, the, the portal, the, the, you know, the whole process figured out with nonprofit, et cetera, et cetera, during the advertisement period so that once the, once you vote, I mean, we could, we could hit the ground very quickly. So I wouldn't waste time. In other words, if, if, if I had the sense from council tonight, the council does want to move forward on this sooner rather than later, then I would, I would do my job and start putting this all together. I mean, so just, whatever you guys decide to do.
Matt, I talked to the county today and they said they are not in favor of doing any of this at this point. They are in favor of looking at it at, at a future day, but not to implement it until after all the avenues of the feds and the states have come through and then they would consider some type of stimulus if, if it comes to that point. But they're not even close to being ready to even implement anything at this point.
What small businesses are in the county?
Well, you got all the businesses out on the corridor and Linden and other places.
Counties, yeah, all businesses are in the county.
Just want to let you guys know that I did talk to the chairman of the, of the board supervisor and then that's their so-called plan at this time, not to do anything at this point and wait and see how the feds work towards the goals. And then if there is a possibility of necessity, then they would reconsider.
I'm not in favor of waiting for the county to move forward on anything. I, we have a responsibility to these people who have maintained our general fund over the years. And if we have a little bit of reserve right now that we can pay back and assist them during this period of time, we ought to be doing that. We're talking about small business in this town, a small town of 15,000 people. And if you don't have that movie house and bowling alley and a hairdresser and barber shop, we've already gone through two months without a haircut. And I know the ladies on board here are probably saying, boy, I wish I had my beautician right now. That's what I'm concerned about. We have to maintain what we got and hope that these businesses are going to come back up. And I don't see why we can't go ahead and implement and try to push this thing forward and then pull the trigger. That's my thought.
One, one, one point of consideration, Mr. Seelak, is take a business that's grossing less than $50,000 a year, is a thousand dollars, 500 of it towards utilities and 500 of it towards assistance, is that going to really keep that business open and keep that business running during this, in the event, the impacts of this COVID-19? Same goes for 50 to 200,000. You know, is this $3,000 going to really have an impact? I, I don't, I can't really answer that. I was hoping to do a survey to try to get a sense. Frankly, I haven't, I haven't gotten many phone calls. I've got a couple of phone calls against the program and, and, but they weren't, they understood where we were coming from. But, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of aspects to consider if you decide to move forward.
Matt, this is, this is Gary. I've, I've been having some heartburn over this, the more I think about it myself. I, I, I want to help 100% wholeheartedly. I understand the hardships that people are going through, but I've, again, you know, I've been tossing about this and I, I really, at the amount that I, that I see, I don't know if that's even going to help, Matt. I know, I want to thank you guys for putting this together. It, it's great. Am I prepared to say no all the way on it right now? No, I don't think I am. But I, I guess I would like to kind of pump the brakes on this a little bit and, and just give it, give it some more thinking through before we pull the trigger. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Gillespie. So based upon my trying to gauge the sense of council, Mr. Holloway, do you have a, do you have a preference one way or the other at this time?
I think he said yes.
He might be on mute.
His mic is muted.
That's fine.
Would you like me to unmute him?
No, that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, I'll, I'll text him till his mic's mute. But Matt, the dollar amounts could also be changed, right? The cap is still the same.
Yes, sir. Well, the cap can be whatever you'd like the cap to be, the dollar, the, the, you know, whatever you guys wish.
Well, this is our first night to absorb this. So we're going to meet next week, Monday. So that gives you time, we're pumping the brakes, as Councilman Gillespie said, and Thompson, but by the same token, it gives us more time to absorb. And we can change the cap, we can change the dollar amounts, we can put the stipulation in of 500,000. You know, you could do numerous things. I mean, I like this proposal as it is. And so that's why I'm, I'm kind of championing this thing right now because it really makes sense to me.
If we're not going to do anything today, can we do a public input? Well, I guess we're no, next, next one time's a work session, isn't it? Never mind. I thought next week was going to be a public hearing.
You can always, you could always advertise, I mean, the, the framework of the program doesn't have to be part of the public hearing, just the fact of appropriating the funds to the nonprofit would be part of the public hearing. So you, you know, you could theoretically move forward to the public hearing and, you know, staff and I can start working on the parameters of the program and you can receive public input. And at that point, before we formalize it, the public, based upon public input, you choose not to do it or you choose to move forward.
So Mr. Teedrick and fellow council members, I just, I just want to say that I agree that the system that looks set up here, you know, I'm, I'm thoroughly impressed with what Mr. Teedrick and Mr. Wilson came up with. I shared with Mr. Teedrick a kind of a funny that one citizen, you know, kind of had it in their mind that we were going to stand down on Main Street and be handing out $100 bills, which was never our intent. So I think that the way this is written up is definitely very well thought out. It's methodical. I, one thought, as Mr. Teedrick shared, which I had thought originally when I saw the $1,000 is, is that if you were a small business, you know, you don't want to look a gift worse than the mouth because any money that would be given to you would be, you know, I'm sure you would be very grateful. I'm just not sure $1,000 is going to pull anybody out of the last month of, of a lack of receipts. However, I'm sure they would be grateful for any assistance. I'm encouraged by somebody saying that we could cap them out differently or we could see how many people actually are interested in this type of relief. And it may be that more are, it may be that less are. I like the idea of some public input because the public input I have gotten has not been supportive of, at all. But I realize that there are probably plenty of people out there that aren't aware of what we're discussing. And so maybe the more we, the more we put it out in the public with the press sharing it, that maybe we will get more input. I'm just going with the citizen input that I, I had, which was to, you know, slow down, as Mr. Gillespie said, pump brakes a little bit and see what, what is going to be provided elsewise. As Mr. Seelak said, I don't necessarily trust that anybody above us is going to do anything, but I do think we owe it to our citizens to look to see what other types of relief they could possibly get.
What do y'all want to do? You want to put it up to on a, in, in the paper for a public hearing or not?
I'm comfortable moving forward that way. As Matt said, I mean, we can change, we can advertise the program. We can choose to vote on it based on how it's written here or continue to divvy it up differently with lower caps or more money with still lower caps. But I think that would, that would also draw out public, public input as well. And listen, I'm not, and I, I, let me just be really clear too, so everybody knows my stance. I am not opposed, if public input comes out to be like, you know, we're overwhelming against it and says, we don't want this, well, well, shoot. I mean, we came up with a program to help our local businesses and overwhelming, if, if public support was overwhelmingly against it and we voted against it because of that, well, hey, I'm comfortable saying we tried everything we could and public opinion was completely against it.
I, I agree with that, Jake. I mean, I have no problem advertising it for a public hearing and, and, and seeing how, how, you know, how it turns out.
All right, Latasha?
Okay, with the public hearing and everything.
Okay.
Chris thought our meeting ended at nine.
I believe he did. Oh, man. Let's see, who else hasn't spoken yet? I guess that's everybody that's spoken, Bill.
Bill and Laurie.
I'd say we move forward to public hearing and between that and that night and the responses we get as councilmen, we'll have a good feeling about whether this is a good program or not.
You know, I, yeah, I, 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 as I said before, I just want the public's, you know, input on this. And so kind of like what Jake said, if there's overwhelming support for it, then by all means I will support it. If there's overwhelming support against it or no support, then I would be inclined to say, let's hold up and wait. I mean, it's not like if we don't do it right now that we couldn't in the future. You know, as long, as long as we have no intention of spending this money somewhere else, we would still have it available to us if we decided to move forward with it.
Okay, Matt, looks like you got your orders.
Mr. Seelak, just to clarify, one other point. Do you want to try to have this at the next regular meeting for the public hearing or do you want a special meeting before that?
Well, I think- I'm thinking the next regular meeting would be Monday night.
I think it needs to be held on a regular agenda meeting, not at a work session.
No, I, no, it's because of the public hearing. It has to be at a regular meeting.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
The next, the next regular meeting is in two weeks.
I don't think you can get it advertised in that length of time.
Because it's a budget amendment, we only have to advertise it one time and we only need one, one reading. So I, correct me if I'm- Uh, so, I, correct me if I'm wrong, BJ, but I think we could advertise it by then.
I think we can. It's just a matter of what, I don't know the, uh, the schedule for the papers. Uh, Tina's still on, she may be able to chime in.
Anyway, we'll, we'll, we'll try to get it. Let me.
We have to. Forward as quickly as you can. I mean, that's, that's the best you can do.
Yeah, just check it out, Matt and, uh, BJ, and just let me know, uh, Thursday, what you find out.
Yes, sir. Sounds great.
Any other discussion on any item tonight?
Uh, I hate to do it, but we also develop a program for the unemployed individual. Are you interested in hearing that tonight, or another meeting?
Well, Matt, I.
Considering.
What you said earlier about six hundred dollars and all that, it looks like that might be a mute issue.
I, I, I'm just.
My opinion of that, Matt, is we hold off on this because we already know they're getting six hundred dollars a week from the federal government. And, you know, we could review later and do it at a later date if we see it necessary.
I think you're right.
I'll focus on the business. I'll focus on business.
Any other discussion?
That's all I have. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Anything else?
The other, um, the only a- opinion item that I have to discuss is how you want to handle FY twenty-one fiscal year budget, and, uh, that's gotta be moved forward as well for a, uh, public hearing. And whether you want to advertise it as we presented it, which means you can always lower the, uh, the amount of the, uh, the expenditures and revenues. We can make the appropriate adjustments. Or do you want to advertise it based upon, um, modified, the modified, uh, presentation that we've, we've given you in the past. So, that decision does not need to be made tonight, right? It can be made at a later date, but I want you to be thinking about how you want to advertise the proposed budget, because we're getting close to that time period.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
We could talk about that, see, later too, uh, maybe on Thursday. Is there anything else tonight? All right.
That's all I have.